Bring me to order, it's November 24th, 2014. It's the meeting of the North Shore Education Committee. Our first order of business is public influence. Does anybody in the audience would like to be recognized? I seem to know one, we move on to the next item. This will be the hardest thing I do online, student report. Jensen, I hope I say this right. Kayata Martin?
Kayata Martin.
Kayata Martin. Okay, that's good enough. Jason, Jensen?
Yes.
Here's student report.
Thanksgiving is approaching fast and the survey that was conducted last year on homework policy has been presented to teachers. The survey consists of various questions regarding the type of homework and how long it takes and how often it is assigned. It was perfect for teachers to think about how much homework they should assign over this coming weekend. And it was, and student representative's goal from last year was to make the survey and have teachers see what, like, kind of reflect on how they've been doing. And spirit week is started from this past Thursday. So Thursday was Throwback Thursday, Friday was Decade Day where, like, each class was given a decade to dress as. Monday was America Monday, uh, today was America Monday, and tomorrow will be Class Colors, and Wednesday will be Pop Rally, which is going through school spirit. No rule fine arts in the student council and class officers held a poetry party on Thursday, November 20th. And the D and C also held a competition called Dancing with the Hornets in gymnasium. Danielle Gillis and her partner, Austin Bradley, won the event. And we're performing on Wednesday's Pop Rally. And Dan's team has made it halfway to their goal of raising enough money for uniforms, and the other half will be raised through 500, really good. In athletics, girls played Linfield on November 15th in their Division III North finals and lost 3-1 against a strong Linfield team. All four goals were scored in the last 10 minutes of the first half.
That's true.
Boys played Wilmington in their semifinal game and took an early 1-0 lead, but with less than eight minutes left to play, Wilmington scored and took North Shore against Double OT. And into PKs, which the boys pulled off, a 42 win to move on to the finals. And then, boys lost to Wayland in the Division III North finals, 3-1. They held a 1-0 lead throughout the, throughout the game, and towards the beginning of second half, Wayland scored three of its goals to win the game. Football will be playing Linfield at 10:00 a.m. in their traditional game on Thurs, uh, this Thursday, this coming Thanksgiving. And it's going to be a tough game as they will play, they will be, they will be playing the undefeated Tineers. Cheering also made states but did not advance as they play 7-16. Other news, junior and senior powder puff game will be held tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m. under the lights. And for my student report, I have this eco column which we made in AP Environmental Science. So this part right here basically represents like terrestrial chamber and decomposition, so like what goes on in our regular environment and how like plants grow and like water. So what we do is we pour water in through here and it filters down into this basic filter right here, just like sand and rocks. So it filters the water. And in the beginning, this water was like super clear and like perfectly, perfectly fine, but like as like, as like things decayed and like nutrients seeped through and this water became like very nutrient filled, so that's why there's more algae grow and more plants. And there's one fish in here.
I thought I saw a fish. I did, I know it was moving.
It was swimming around in there.
I thought it was a dead fish.
There was one that died though.
Really?
Yeah, it's tougher, so.
Tough environment.
Yep.
He's one of the people of it. It's cool.
Yep.
Any questions, or Jensen, or Kyle?
I have a question on that, so what's the project? How do you watch that all for like a semester?
Yeah, so over time, we've been recording basically like phosphates in the water, nitrates in the water, dissolved oxygen, pH levels, and also like fish status and like how like if there's decay in the terrestrial chamber and if there's plant growth. So we just like note those things down and for tour, and once we're done with the project, we'll be doing like a lab report.
How long is the project almost over?
It's still, it's still going, so it's almost over.
When did it start?
Uh, it started, I think, a couple of weeks into school, actually, so.
Wow. Cool. Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to all the fall athletic teams, but the, obviously the boys and girls soccer teams both made it to the non-sectional finals. Unfortunately, they both lost, but they had great seasons. The cheerleaders made it to the states, great season. Football team has really come around to, and they've got that big game as Jensen mentioned on Thursday. It's at 10 o'clock and it's at the high school field, not the middle school field.
The newer, the new complex.
The new turf complex.
Sunday.
At the Linfield High School, which is spectacular. I cannot describe it in any other way, I've never seen anything like it. I haven't, I've never seen a college facility with athletic fields like that, so.
But volleyball also made it to the states.
Volleyball made it to the state tournament as well, yes.
And golf made it to the states.
Yep.
And we had a couple individual bowlers.
Jake O'Conne.
Jake O'Conne over in cross country.
Good fall season.
Right.
Good fall season, we've had great success for the last few years with our, with our sports teams and all seasons. Jensen, thank you very much. This is your first time here?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you don't have to stay. My advice would be to get out. Do your homework, do your homework. You don't want to stay here.
Well, unless that survey comes back and says we're not going to get homework anymore.
I mean, after your report, it just goes downhill.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jensen. Good job. Okay, I'm going to wait on the policy. We'll wait for Mr. Bowles to get here. He should be here by 7:30, I think, and we're going to have Mr. Bowles and Ms. Embryon had a lot to do with that policy, so we'll wait on that. What we'll do is the MSBA SSBC, that's the Secondary School Building Committee update. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a few updates that I think are informative for, for you, the audience as well. There's a lot, a lot of movement over at the middle school construction site. It's, it's progressing well. The installation of the steel framing to define, define the entry to the new middle school has begun. There's been a significant amount of work on the roof decking. The project manager informs me that he's pleased with the progress to date. The hope is that installation of windows will fall over the goal of having the new middle school weather tight in January. The idea being that that will allow for a great deal of interior work to take place during the winter months. The interior concrete subfloor slab placements in the one-story and the two-story middle school structures has begun. And as you know, Mr. Veneti and Mr. Webster, particularly the punch list items that we had crafted, started back in October, has gone through a pretty thorough review over two visitations of the school. The work continues to address those punch list items. It is, it is significant, but I am confident that, that working with our team, that all of our concerns will be addressed adequately. There is still some work to be done, but I'm hopeful that they will continue to work with us in a cooperative way to, to ensure our satisfaction. A pretty substantial development is that the rear access road, which will be the continuation of the road that gets us into the new facility now, on the schedule for paving on or around November 28th, weather dependent, but that road is on the schedule for paving to continuation around the back of the facilities. Jeff White, our project manager, informs me that that is, is hoped for this coming Friday, again, weather dependent, which could be a complication, but we're not sure we're there after.
Thank you, John. I'd just add too that the Godrail on the downward side of the access road, all the way from really the gym down to the middle school parking lot, hopefully is going to be installed within the next, I hope, three to four weeks.
Three to four weeks is the time.
A number of people on our committee and, you know, members of the public have suggested that that may be a safety hazard for winter time, so that we are, we have taken the initiative to install Godrail. I think that Department of Public Works might be.
Correct.
Because they were, they were available and I don't think the contractor wants to get that work done, so I think the total cost is going to be around $45,000, including the.
Right, including, including the paving.
Yeah.
My understanding is that the Public Works, the person that they're contracting with had a cancellation in their schedule, so they were able to accommodate this. Would you say, Mr. Veneti, we're looking at a three to four week installation, I think.
Okay. Do you need to do anything to add on all the projects?
I was just curious, there had been a little bit of discussion about not using the access road on a wintery, slippery day.
Yes.
Anything come about with that?
It has. So last week, I met with several people, the county administrator, the police chief, the fire chief, Wayne Hardiker, Dick Harnavale, the director of Public Works, and we discussed that as well as the speed table issue. And I think in the end, it was determined that the level of cooperation that we expect to receive from the Public Works department and with our own personnel, Wayne Hardiker's staff, to treat the, the access road in the winter months was, at least right now, enough to satisfy me, that the plan to, to utilize that road in the way that we have and to not, to not access the school from, say, Oakdale Sherman Road, which is, is a place where I'm comfortable right now. There was a willingness on everybody's part to assess it as, as things progressed and if we do need to make any changes, whether it's a different access or a way in which we treat that road on a, on a particularly bad morning, that we would do that. So the door was left open for that. The speed table issue, I don't know if you'd like to know.
Go ahead.
What was started with that.
Yes.
Again, this is all subject to the approval of the SSBC, but what the discussion was, was that if there were speed tables to be installed on the road, on the right-hand lane going up, coming up the hill, that they would have kind of two separations in them, so that the fire department, if they needed to get an engine up, up to the site, would have the ability for their tires to go and say these, these openings on either side of the speed table going up. Coming down, the speed table would be across the, from the center line, say, just a small space near the, near the new Godrail that's going to be installed. And so I think, I think there was a consensus in the room at that meeting that the recommendation to the Secondary School Building Committee would be to go with that plan, which my understanding is that was the original plan. And that, that to not have speed tables on, say, the, the lane coming up would not be a good thing because there, there would be a tendency to maybe invite, say, come into that lane to avoid the speed table if they were coming down. So the, the design is such that, as it, as it was explained to me, is that, that the speed table can accommodate a 15, up to a 15 mile an hour speed of a vehicle without, you know, causing any kind of, like we might get with a traditional kind of speed bump, but this is more of a table that you kind of come up, go on, and then come back off. So, because my concern was to the, to the earlier discussion just a moment ago about slowing traffic down on the access road coming up, that that would not be the case. It's not, it's not like a speed bump that you would have to stop, stop for and then go over. This is more the idea is designed when you continue your travel, it just causes you to slow down, not to have to stop.
And Wayne doesn't have a problem with it for plowing and such?
I don't think I would say that. I think that was, that was a question that was raised in the discussion. I think it was more for the, the Public Works is really the primary operator for plow. We would be, the department personnel would clean up, but there is, there is a potential for there to be gaps that, that the plow doesn't hit when the speed table, say, has an opening, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't label that as a major concern, but it was a question raised.
So we're probably going to have this on the agenda at the next SSBC.
For the Secondary School Building Committee, right?
Okay. When's the next meeting, John?
December 2nd.
December 2nd, if that's a Tuesday, I presume?
It is.
Okay. Any further on the building project? Okay. Are you Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, we've got Mark Flaherty here from the North Shore High School Adventure Club that's going to make presentations on the move on the agenda to accommodate Mark. Do you want to vote for that? Are you ready to? Are you waiting something?
No, I'll be ready.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sure. Do you want me to come up?
Yeah, why don't you come on up?
Sure.
Center here, or you can come up right in here, the student representative.
So I've come to you today, much like the reason I came last year, we're just getting all the trips approved. So our main one that we're, really the only one where we have on the agenda for today is the ski trip, which is the second week of February. So I think the first of February falls on a Sunday, and it would be the weekend after that. We would leave that Friday, I believe, because we don't have school, so we would leave when school would end, because that's when Ms. Brown is free, and we would return on Sunday, Sunday morning.
Any idea how many kids are going?
Um, we, we don't really have a sure amount, but last year is around 40 kids went. We're hoping to get that number, if not, if not more. But I would say 40 kids at mass is probably the number that we're looking at for this year.
So I think our policy is to have at least one chaperone for every 10 kids, right? So that's all, you know, make sure that we have that. John, do you have a recommendation?
I, I do have a recommendation. I also, if I could, I do recommend the trip.
Yeah.
But I did speak to Ms. Brown, and she's not able to be here tonight with Mark because parent teacher conferences are going on. So thank you, Mark, for coming and offering your presentation. Right now, she has three chaperones signed up.
Right, that's what I'm looking.
She indicated that if there was, if they did get to the 40, which was the ultimate goal, that they would have another chaperone. So she, she's very well aware of the one to 10 issue.
Okay. Any questions from the committee?
So last year you had around 40 in that work area?
Yeah, oh yeah, it was beautiful. It was beautiful. It was, it was one of the, one of the better trips we had of the year. It was, I mean, they're always fun, they're blessed.
Good. Is this the third or fourth year we've done this, I think? Because I, I think we did on the first year of the club starting. When you, when you guys take these trips, I'm not trying to be a lawyer here, but do you sign waivers at all or regarding?
So we, the Adventure Club ourselves has a permission slip that you have to sign. And then the mountain we go to, which is Loomin Mountain, up in Loomin, Hampshire, has a form you have to sign in the U of A as well.
All right, I just want to make sure we're covered.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. If there's no other questions, then we're going to need a vote on whether or not to approve the Adventure Public Works for a trip, a ski trip to one of the mountains. Motion by Mel, second by Janine. Any discussion here and then? All those who favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none. Motion carries by voter three to nothing. Mark, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, next on the agenda, we'll revert back to new business and the North Shore Education Consortium articles of agreement need to be approved, and we also need to vote to appoint the superintendent as our representative to the North Shore Consortium. So John, do you want to brief us on that?
I do, thank you. So including your packet are the, are the Articles of Agreement for the North Shore Education Consortium, of which North Shore is a member. And as Mr. Veneti has said, what I'm hoping for to see there is for two votes. One is to appoint a representative to the collaborative, this education collaborative. It can be either the superintendent or a member of the school committee. And also your vote on an endorsement of the Articles of Agreement for the consortium. And just by way of a little bit of a background, I can tell you that we have had very good, a very good relationship, North Shore has a very good relationship with the North Shore Education Consortium for servicing students with special needs. There is an annual membership fee, and that fee is $10,000. It was $10,000 last year. I have a little bit of a breakdown for you on, because it was a full year as opposed to where we are so early in this school year. We had 11 students last year that received services through the North Shore Education Consortium. Because we were a member district, the, the savings for us was $86,228. If we had not been a member district, we would not have realized that savings. Currently, we, in this school year, we have five students to date that have received some sort of services through, through the consortium. So the, the, the format for the Articles of Agreement to be adopted by the, by the 20 member districts is such that it's a, it's an accountability, and it's, it's to ensure that, that school districts are in agreement with the operations, the fiduciary obligations, and just the management of the consortium, and that they are kept informed. And there are, there are requirements that I have to meet if you do choose to appoint me as the representative, that I have, in order to keep you informed, there is, there is a training that the, that the representative, that I would need to take in order to ensure that there is a legitimacy and a satisfaction with the level of service that, that the consortium provides for the districts.
Thank you, John. Any questions?
John, when we, when you say services provided, is this tutors, is it schools that we send students to through the North Shore Consortium? What does, how does it work?
Yes, there are, there are five schools of which the consortium operates, and it would be our students attending those schools for students with special needs. It could also be a situation where a student may need to have a 45-day assessment, and they would provide that service for us as well. I think, does that answer your question?
John, is it possible then that we'll have more students as the school year goes along than more than five?
It is.
Okay.
It is possible. Last year we had 11. I, I think that's possible, it's sometimes it's needs based.
Janine, any further? Okay, we're going to need a vote now to, oh, by the way, is anyone interested in, in being a representative?
I think John should.
I think John should?
Yes.
Janine? I was going to volunteer, because she's not here. But, John, you want to get out of this?
No, I'm happy to do it.
And we, so we belong to two consortiums, right?
We do, and I'm probably going to bring something similar to you to the scene collaborative. I have a meeting actually tomorrow morning.
Okay. All right, so what we need is a motion to approve, to endorse the Articles of Agreement for the North Shore Education Consortium.
Second.
Okay, motion by Janine, second by Mel. Any discussion here and then? All those who favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none. Motion carries three to nothing. We're going to need a second vote to approve Superintendent John Bernard as the school district's representative to the Board of Directors. Motion by Janine, second by Mel. There are no further discussion. All those who favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none. Motion carries by voter three to nothing. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Mr. Veneti. I think just before we leave town, there is a form we need to sign.
Sorry, remind us off the.
I, I sure, I will. Thank you.
Okay, minutes of the meeting, October 14th, 2014, executive session. We're not done yet, we've got a lot of stuff left to do here, so.
I don't like these three number meetings. Fine here.
So do I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes from October 14th, 2014?
I reviewed them, they were fine, so I will make a motion to approve executive session minutes from October 14th.
Motion by Mel, second by Janine. There are no further discussion. All those who favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none. Motion carries by voter three to nothing. The October 14th, 2014, open session minutes. Move to a per. Okay, we have a motion by Mel, second by Janine. There are no further discussion. All those who favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none. Motion carries by voter three to nothing.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to reference something in the, the October 14th minutes on page four? It mentions that we did take a vote in public session to approve the payments for the administrative special projects. I don't think we did take a vote for the second one, did we? That we approved.
I announced them to you.
But we didn't take a vote?
At the meeting, there was no vote taken.
Right. And so.
I think we had a discussion about that.
Right, but we did take, we did take a vote, it looks, appears to be. It says, "The committee voted to approve $17,625 to go to a special project."
We did vote on that. We didn't, we had a discussion.
Yeah, I don't think we did. That's a correction then.
Oh, then so.
Yeah, I don't think we did take a vote. So that should just reflect that you.
It says we voted on a motion by, by myself.
Really?
And seconded by Cliff to approve $17,625, and it passed five years.
I don't, actually, I don't see a harm in taking the vote, I think. I don't think it required a vote.
Right.
But the fact that we took it, if we took it, then.
So I'm arguing we need to take a vote on the other.
For the two additional?
The two additional ones.
Yeah, I, and I.
We can do that.
You want that information now on the two?
Yeah, if you want to give us the.
The two, the two additional were for Mr. LaPratt, a $1,500 special project stipend for the management and student activities account.
Right.
And the second one was to Kathy O'Connell as a mentor or principal to Mr. LaPratt, the new high school principal. That is also $1,500.
Okay, so those are the two that we have. I think we can vote on those together, obviously. Later on tonight, the discussion, I think we're going to have, we're going to talk a little bit more about this, because there was a letter of transfer a week ago Thursday, and I just wanted to clarify it for anybody that had a question about it, so. Do you have a motion to approve those stipends? Move to accept the two stipends.
Thanks.
Okay, motion by Mel and second by Janine. Any further discussion here and then? All those who favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none. Motion carries by voter three to nothing. Next on the agenda, we're going to ask Mr. Conley, the Director of Finance and Operations, to give us a budget update.
Great. So the budget update was included in your packet this, this month. There's a couple of highlights I want to reference in the report in regards to expenses. The report's broken down as typical expenses and payroll. There are funds available in special education line items, in particular, the special education tuition and transportation line items. This is as a result of some changes in student placements, as well as a reduction in the number of forecasted students that require transportation this year, that we had forecasted during the budget process of last year. As we have mentioned in the past, we also have the ability to prepay some tuitions at the end of fiscal year 2014 above the budgeted amounts during the budget process, so this has provided some additional flexibility, which will help us addressing unforeseen costs in this area. It is becoming evident that we have seen an increase in our unemployment expenses. This is a result of some staff changes that have occurred, and we are seeing, it, it doesn't appear that we will exceed our unemployment expense budgeted line this, this year. We have been monitoring costs closely in terms of our utilities, and at the moment, our costs remain within budgeted ranges. Still very early in the heating season, but we are going to certainly closely monitor our gas efficiency in particular, especially at this new, new high school rebuilding. It's still unclear whether or not there'll be funds to repurpose in this area or not as we've had in the past, but we, I do anticipate that we'll remain within budgeted ranges of our utility budgets. It has become clear, we continue to familiarize ourselves with how to operate the new waste for the treatment plant. It has become clear over the last couple of months that we will incur some additional costs as a, as a result of really trying to figure out how to operate that plant and keep it running smoothly, and start a new territory to the school district and to Wayne Hardiker, who's been working closely with the operator and the engineer of that plant. The base bids that were done last year and procured did not include the full scope of services. There are additional expenses in terms of treating the plant on a monthly basis with the right chemical and solutions to keep it running, as well as responding to alarm call, responding to on-call, providing on-call assistance as needed. So it has, it has become evident that it will require some additional expenses beyond the two bids that were done last year. We have been analyzing, again, the utility costs to run that plant, so there is electricity and a gas cost to operate the plant. And it does appear through the first few months of this year that those costs will exceed the forecasted amounts that we discussed during the budget process last year. So it's something that we're going to be monitoring closely. We did budget, we had called $100,000 for all these expenses, and that was really the result of some information by the consultants and the experts involved with the project. And it is becoming evident that there'll be some, some of the start costs in the first couple of months that, that budgeted line, and we certainly may, may exceed that, that line of $100,000. We continue to watch the food service program closely. We closed out the month of October, and I think things continue to be certainly on a positive trend. Mail counts are slightly greater than they were last year in the month of October. In particular, the high school mail counts are up about 10% as compared to last year. And overall, after the first two months of the school year, we are 6,500, the, the loss is $6,500 to last year, it was at last October at this time. So things are certainly trending in the positive direction for the food service program. Moving forward to payroll, and there's nothing significant to report at this time. As has been reported in the past, administration lies projecting a slight deficit, that's As has been reported in the past, administration lies projecting a slight deficit as probably the result of some recent administrative restructuring and changes. In November, we did complete the final review of the additional credits that professional support staff earn contractually. Our professional support staff have until October to turn in any credits that they may have earned over the summer months for additional compensation. And we've completed that review in November. I'm actually happy to report that our forecasted amounts in the budget are more than enough to cover the projected increases and there'll even be some available funds in this area.
And that's a contractual obligation?
It's a contractual obligation. Last year in college, we didn't quite forecast the amount of that increase. That was a big accounting deficit in that line. So that won't be the case this year. The custodial line is also reflecting a slight deficit in this report and that's a result of the additional custodial that we approved and hired, that position, that staff number did start in October. So that is reflected on this report. That being said, I'll just turn it over to those in particular questions.
Questions? I have tons, but in terms of the special education costs, obviously we have to keep, I think the potential cut I saw was one point five percent and the percentage cut...
Correct.
...on the circuit breaker.
Yes.
What would that, you know what that would mean to us?
I do, yeah. So there has been some discussion and everyone's aware of some potential what they call Nancy cuts. And that's when the governor can propose mid-year cuts to the state budget which would have an impact on us. So a couple of those items on the potential list does include the special education circuit breaker count. It would be proposing about a two million dollar, or about a three point eight million dollar cut to special education reimbursement funds. That would be, I've heard in that about one point five percent.
Right.
And that would only result in about fifteen thousand dollars for us. But most recently, the Department of Elementary and Special Education Education, Jay Sullivan, who handles the special education reimbursement account through the school finance office, he actually believes that they can absorb that reduction without impacting posted reimbursement amounts through all the districts.
So chances are our amount would not change then?
Yes, there's a very good chance that our amount would not, that we are anticipating this year and forecast it would not result, not be impacted. They have less extraordinary relief claims than they anticipated, so there's some available funds in that balance in their account to repurpose. So they feel that they can absorb that one point five percent cut without going back to districts and impacting their reimbursement amount. Some other items do include a potential reduction to charge school tuition reimbursement which shouldn't have a huge impact on us. There's also potential reductions to regional and vocational transportation. The vocational transportation amount has been completely eliminated in his proposal, governor's proposal. So that would have a slight impact on the general fund revenue. That's general fund revenue that comes into town. But we have historically been receiving about twelve to twelve thousand dollars of vocational transportation reimbursement as general fund revenue. It's unclear what will happen from unrestricted local aid. There's been discussions that it could be a potential two and a half to two point seven percent. That is a proposal that would have to do with approval and there's already been some opposition to that reduction certainly at the state level. So we'll have to see how that plays out. You know, a potential two and a half to two point seven percent reduction to our local aid would be about, an impact of about forty-five thousand dollars.
Right. Next was, I was surprised to see that our unemployment insurance budget is probably going to exceed it. Is there a specific reason?
Yeah, that actually, that was a budget line that we did feel, actually in the budget process, we thought there was some risk in that budget line. We had increased the unemployment insurance line that we had budgeted by about twenty thousand dollars in that. It all comes back to some of the difficult decisions we made in fiscal fifteen and fortunately we had to face some staffing reductions to balance our fiscal fifteen budget. And as a result, that impact is impacting our unemployment account this year, so...
You know, you know by how much?
How much are we interested in being...
Yeah.
It could run a potential, we've budgeted sixty and at this point I'm projecting we could spend between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars.
I'm a little, this isn't aimed at you, but I'm a little upset about the issue with the treatment plan for the new schools. Were we aware of these other costs that we didn't budget for? Because we had a consultant come in, correct, and told us, "This is what you need to do. This is what you need to go up to bid for." And now what you're telling me is that didn't include monthly chemical treatments, didn't include other things than...
Well, no, the budget, the budget projection as a moving target settled at about a hundred thousand dollars. And that didn't include an estimate of, the base bid is a base bid that requires the operator to be here two hours a day and that's how it was bid. And the way the RFP and contract was structured, that some of the other treatment and alarm calls and event calls were all, you know, above the base bids that were being proposed. And the hundred thousand dollar amount, I honestly attempted to project the need based on how the contract and the RFP is being structured. Well, we've realized partly that it's a complicated process. The plant that's been developed is a bioimpressing plant and it's certainly a lot involved and in some cases it's requiring some extra time beyond two hours and there has been some, you know, calls and some needs to, that had some alarm calls that we dealt with. But the hundred thousand dollar amount, the experts and the consultants, they were encompassing everything that we talked about. One thing that they did underestimate that I'm seeing is electricity, the gas and the electricity costs to operate that plant. Their proposal within that hundred thousand dollar amount was about, they were hoping it would be cost around thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars between electricity and gas. And based on the bill that I've analyzed over the first three months of operation, it's looking like that cost is going to be more than twenty-five thousand dollars.
See, that, I guess that's what I don't get. I mean, again, we're paying experts to tell us something and they're off by almost a hundred percent in their estimate of costs. I just, I just don't get it. And while it's a small number, if you add this in and you add in the unemployment insurance you just mentioned and the potential cuts, I start to get concerned, not so much about this year, I think over through next year, but then when we go into next year, we're going to have to budget higher for all of these costs.
Correct.
And I'm not so sure that the revenue's going to be there. So I guess, you know, it sounded to me like instead of a hundred thousand, we may need a hundred and thirty thousand.
Right, I guess, yes.
Or more.
That's what, yeah, I think a hundred and thirty thousand could be the number we're looking at to operate that plant. Yeah, I mean, it's certainly new territory for us as we've tried to, we've taken over that plant and it's, we're finding it's not, it's complicated. There's a lot, a lot involved. And, you know, we'll continue to monitor it. Things could slow down, things could settle and we could certainly come much closer to that hundred thousand dollar number. But I think I'm trying to reflect based on what I've seen over the first three months for September through November and, you know, trying to report on what we're seeing, what I'm seeing. And I'm seeing that there's a very strong potential that a hundred thousand dollar amount would exceed.
I think every time you have heavy rain, we get an alarm over there, right? I mean, that's been the, that's been the pattern, right? We get heavy rains.
Yeah, we did.
So, all right, that's just, and then I had on the, good news on the lunch, the food services program. In terms of the contract, the additional credits, John, do we have a committee, a subcommittee that's looking at that and restructuring credits? Was that part of our negotiations in the last teacher's contract?
It was. It was. The committee did very good work over a period of several months and that before will be part of the next round of negotiations as a discussion item.
While we're talking about that, we're going to schedule a executive session for December of eighteenth.
Okay.
At six thirty, that will discuss strategy for Claudio Boggan and I'd like everybody to take a look at the contract, come in so that we have, you know, something to talk about, talk about the strategy. Again, John, I think if you can get that report to us by then, we can take a look at that. That's going to be, I think, a fairly critical part of this.
Was there one other...
If there is, is one of the advisors' stipends.
Sure, yeah, right.
I have both reports available too.
All right, that's all I have, it's just...
Do you need anything on the budget report?
No.
I just want to say, I did talk to Wayne the other day too and he said that is, the plant is complicated, but we're working the kinks out. I do agree with Mel that the cost is going to be more than what we budgeted for this year. But I think at the end of the year, we'll have a good handle on what that's going to be. Hopefully, we'll get those kinks worked out. I guess I have much concern about the overall energy costs. What have you seen as far as the building overall, say electric wise, for the first few months?
So certainly we've seen an increase as anticipated in that cost. But I certainly, it certainly has leveled out and we fully expect us to be within budgeted ranges, so...
Okay, so we haven't got hit in the face by anything with the electric as far as this new building?
No, I mean, we certainly are seeing the trend, we're certainly realizing that trend and that shift from electricity to gas, that's certainly happened from gas electricity. So electricity cost is going up, gas is going down. Hasn't yet, I've not seen November gas bill for this building or all the gas bills this week except for this bill next month. That's a number I'm interested in a lot.
So we need to, obviously, monitor that as forward.
So we need to monitor that. This is the first month we have.
Jerry, Michael said the first electric bill they got initially here was shocking and it ended up being for forty-five days.
Yeah, so I'm a little nervous. The first electricity bill.
I was worried about it. I had no idea what to expect.
It was about mid-October, the mid-month electricity bills come in and the first bill was a little shocking, but we looked at the numbers and it actually was about a forty-five day billing period from September one when the building was turned over to middle of October. So the November fifteenth bill leveled out and it was back into what we had anticipated. So projecting forward, I actually think will be under the hundred eighty thousand dollar amount, will be more than one sixties. So it's certainly, it's certainly increasing, but that's what we anticipated. The rail, what we have to really closely monitor is, is will gas significantly decrease like we anticipated? And, you know, the gas was, we haven't seen a gas bill while the heat was turned on for a full, for an entire month. So if it come in any day now, maybe I'll probably get it tomorrow or Wednesday anticipating. It'll certainly be important that we monitor that.
Okay. My concern though, in terms of these increased costs, you know, going into two thousand and fifteen, sixteen budget planning, I think we really have to keep the focus on staffing at this building because of the numbers we're going to have here next year. We're going to be eight hundred twenty, eight hundred twenty-three kids. And I think we already need additional staffing here. So I'm just concerned with those costs increasing and how that's going to, you know, if that's going to eliminate any wiggle room we might have to bring more staff.
Well, cost increases is one thing, but knowing about them is what we need to know to plan. So that's really the thing we have to get a handle on is both the, the gas and the electric bills to see where we stand. Anything further, Dennis, do you have anything further on the budget report?
No, I think just picking up a little bit on the cost on the wastewater plant, the startup time and, you know, the startup is complex and we've heard that before, but basically you've got a very low flow at this point and you're trying to manage that and develop a process. The way this works is just raw wastewater coming down the hill and then you have to build up a culture of bacteria to run the process. And that doesn't happen instantly. And when you're trying to start out with such a small flow, when the plant's designed for maximum flow, that becomes quite difficult. So I'm not surprised that there's a lot of callback.
Yeah, there's been that, there's been certainly a lot of that over the first couple of months. And we've had, me and myself have met with both the engineer and the operator several times to kind of talk through this and we've had some pretty, it's been very informative and we've certainly learned a lot about the plant and how it runs and how it operates. And they're sort of letting us know what, you know, what's involved and why it's required some extra hours to operate successfully. But we're also trying to work through and nail down appropriate kind of chain of command and chain of approval through the engineer down to the operator and communication to both Wayne and myself so we can be aware of when, you know, when these calls are taking place and, you know, when they may be in need of some additional hours. There's a sort of, the checks and balances, the engineer's always watching what the operator's doing and overseeing that, et cetera. But certainly some of the equipment that was installed, you know, there was some minor issues the first couple of months, some of those were signed to warranty. So that, that was actually part of a lot of the additional hours. And I know our project manager, PMA, is sort of actually working with, you know, the operator and the installer of some of that equipment by own process to resolve some of those issues. But, you know, from the operator's standpoint, if they see an issue they want to respond, their number one job is to keep the plant operating successfully, so it's not a major issue. So, you know, they did that. But some of that, some of that cost we have paid, it's being worked out because some of it involves a warranty issue.
Okay, thank you, Mike. All right, next on the agenda, we're going to go back to the policy FDCA, the naming of fields and special facilities. Mr. Valas and Ms. Embriano both work on the policy subsequently. We have a draft in front of us, we've been going back and forth with this, trying to get a handle on it. So I'll turn it over to either Cliff or Janine for presentation purposes as to what we have in front of us.
Well, this is, as you had asked, we have modified the policy itself down to a much shorter, more direct policy. And we have modified the procedure part of it, the regulation part of it, to again shorten it and make it more direct. And I think we're now ready to listen to whatever comments you have.
Okay, who wants to start?
In the first paragraph, I'm not overly comfortable with that sentence about further school commission not be influenced since decision by personal prejudice, privileges on political pressure or temporary popularity because I think that's a given, but I can live with that being in the policy if the rest of the committee can. I'm not so sure I support the unanimous vote issue recommendation. I see that we no longer have the person that the property or room or school is being named after has to be deceased, but we do have language in here that says to perpetuate the memory. So I'm assuming that that means the person still has to be deceased. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. And then I guess the last thing is, we talk about it should be a person, it must be a person who has gained distinction through long and faithful, faithful service to the school district, community, blah, blah, blah. But that rules out national figures. So what if we had a national figure that someone wanted to name the school after? That kind of rules that out. So those are my, those are my comments.
Janine?
Well, you could interpret to perpetuate the memory of a person who was gained. You could interpret it as being deceased, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. Like if we wanted to call one of the art rooms, the O'Brien Art Room, we're perpetuating her name, her memory of all of her hard work, but she's not, you know, that way, so it could be beyond that one. I don't see a problem with striking the further school commission not be influenced by its personal prejudice, because I don't necessarily fall for those things in making a decision, so I don't feel on that one either. But I was trying to find your last one.
Well, we say that it has to be someone who's related to the town. And what I'm saying is, what if we wanted to name a school the...
JFK.
JFK, the Joe DiMaggio Baseball Field or the, well, I wouldn't be sure, the Ted Williams Baseball Field or something. I'm not saying we do that, but that eliminates the opportunity to do that.
All right. Again, this got away from me because it's, this is not where I wanted to go. So I guess I'm in the minority here on this. I really wanted to simplify, I don't know what a special facility is. And I, by the way, you guys did good work on this because obviously you guys...
Temporarily named out, that's the same name.
I don't, I just...
Right, I crossed it out too because I don't...
So you guys did a good job. I'm in the minority here. I just wanted to simplify it. And again, you know, I, something along the lines of the North Carolina School Committee believes naming a field and then I wanted to define what we're talking about. A field, a park, a plaza, a school building or any part of a school building or building grounds, you know, as opposed to a special facility because I'm not sure what that means. Yeah, I mean, again, I don't like anything that requires unanimous vote in the school committee. And I don't disagree that, you know, there should be some criteria for this. But even on the procedure, my feeling is it comes to the school committee. And to me, the school, I can't, I don't envision, and I don't know that I've ever seen a school committee soliciting or announcing the interest to name a field or a special facility. To me, it would be by petition. Somebody wants to petition the school committee, whether it's an individual, a member of the school committee itself, a member of the administration or whatever, they would petition the school committee to, to name as we have experienced in the last year, whether it was Ms. Dell or whether it was Charlie Jones. And then once we receive the petition, then the school committee could, they could appoint a subcommittee or they could have a public hearing and then make a decision to vote on. So I guess I'm in a different place on this than everybody else. I just wanted to really simplify it. I know also that you continue with the policy to say that, one, it has to be unanimous vote and, two, that it cannot be the middle school or the high school if those are excluded. So it would only pertain to, three, elementary schools or some part of the high school or middle school, so... But if you guys, you know, want to make a motion to approve this with maybe some of the changes that Mel made, I don't know. It's just, it's more complicated than I wanted it to be, so... John, do you want to weigh in on this? You don't have to, but if you want to.
You know, I attended the meetings with Janine and Cliff and I, as you said, Jerry, you know, they put, I think it all brought good thought into, I think that, you know, I certainly don't want to speak for the two of them, but I think the tone of the meetings was that they would try to strike a balance and do what is believed to be fair and at the same time having, having, having a protocol in place that, that doesn't just allow for something to happen haphazardly.
See, I like the idea of, I agree with you that, I don't, I can't ever envision the school committee blowing up and saying, "Okay, we're going to name a building now and we're going to form a committee." But if someone came in with a petition, I like the idea of having a screening committee and I also like the idea of inviting other people who may have other...
Yeah, I guess I can even look with that, you know, just...
Cliff and I, John, discussed that too because I'm like, when are we, are we, as a school committee, going to say, "Okay, let's name the room underneath the distance learning lab." I think we need to give it a call of a name. I don't think that we'd ever do that, but if in the future someone comes to us saying, you know, "I'd like to name the distance learning lab after so-and-so," at that point we would open it up saying that, you know, there's been interest in naming a field that is part of the school. And at that point, if there was other people out there that had the same idea, now they have the ability to come to us and say that. So, I mean, we could say that if someone comes to us with a petition or we decide to, you know, open it up. Would that clarify the first part?
I guess the other thing that's interesting though, so when Eleanor Dell's family came here and they donated six hundred and sixty... here and they donated $665,000 to the school district, I don't think that's something that should go before a committee. So then there's that, that kind, where I think, you're making that kind of donation, I'm not going to solicit other names to name an art room after somebody.
Well, we can get a bidding war going.
Well, that's true, we can get a bidding war going. But...
No, somebody wants to register the...
So that does make it a little complicated with what, you know, Janine? I, I mean, I support giving people the opportunities to suggest, to make suggestions. But then you have the occurrence like with the Eleanor Dell Foundation.
I, I would at least like to define special facility. And we have field or special facility, and again, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of school buildings, parts of school buildings, you know, building grounds, I mean, just for instance.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure what a special facility is, I have no idea
what that means.
Right, but I think that's what the current, the current policy says, it's always said that.
A field, a park, a plaza, part of a school building, a school building, other than a, you know, I mean, there's nothing to prevent us or preclude us from somebody coming in and petitioning us to rename the EFO Little School, you know, the E. Joe Big School or something, you know what I mean? So, I mean, that's always a possibility.
So you're saying you basically would keep the...
I, I just want to define special facility, I'd like to get rid of the unanimous vote, I'd like to make it on a petition to the school committee.
Well, that can be a petition, it can also be if someone just...
Petition request, whatever, you know, when I say petition, I'm saying, come to the school committee and ask if it could be considered. And if that happens, I have no problem forming a subcommittee and then basically asking or soliciting others that might be interested also, and submitting somebody's name for that, you know, particular.
But there should be something in there about...
And I do think, I do think it should be left open, that we don't in perpetuity say that, you know, it cannot be more threatening, high school or middle school. I think that's something, again, that the sitting school committee has to vote on. So, that's just my view.
Well, they can vote on it, which is being, again, they can change the policy, right?
Right, they can.
The other thing is, there should be, there should be a clause or something that says the school committee retains the right to name facilities. I'm, I'm getting to the Eleanor Dell situation, where someone came in with a huge donation.
And all of the donations were still clearly definitely paid.
Right, something about...
You could, you could say the school, the school committee will, you know, again, any group may petition the school committee, and if that group petitions the school committee as based on that, then the school committee can vote on it.
Based on a donation, I see...
I don't even know it has to be based on donation, I mean, I'm just, you know...
Yeah, with this, with these regulations, open it up that if someone comes to us, then we have to go through this whole process.
Yeah, no.
So do you want us to put in a clause that if it's a monetary donation, that it's up to the school committee to forego all?
So that's making a distinction from, from monetary donation to somebody just asking to do it because somebody had displayed all the credentials that are in the thing.
Yeah, that's going to constitute two distinctions of the most recent Eleanor Dell and Charlie Jones.
Those are the two examples, right there. I'm not sure the process should necessarily be different, three to one.
And, so you're, you're basically looking for one, two sentences in that policy, like we have now, basically?
I, I'm looking for a little bit more of a, you know, a simplified policy that basically, again, says the school committee believes in a field, et cetera, whatever. And I wanted to find special facility so that includes all things that might be named. It could be the access road, it could be the plaza up front, it could be...
Could be a new...
A bench.
Any kind of special facility.
A special facility, I, I, I mean, the access, yeah, I, again, I'm having problems defining special facility, but if you want to leave that as a catch-all.
But a special, but a building is a special facility, that's correct. It should be names, naming of fields, roads, buildings.
I don't know what makes it special, but I'm not sure I've defined facilities.
Some, for instance.
And again, I'm not crazy about a unanimous vote.
Well, neither am I.
I mean, I think generally, if you look back through history, I'll say, well, I'm not on the school committee. I'm not mentioning names yet, but I think it should be a majority vote.
It would seem that if you are going to name something, which is going to be kind of like in perpetuity, that it would make some sense to have that be kind of a unanimous view.
Yeah, but Cliff, you know what, you come right back to the same thing, that you're saying to make it unanimous, but you have, you know, you have people that may feel, as you do, about the middle school and the high school feel about naming anything with a school. So now you've got one member whose position of policy is, well, I don't think anything should be named after a...
John, it's not.
Well, again...
Three years, that's, you know... I won't, I won't vote, I won't support this if the unanimous vote stays that, I'll vote against it, so.
But I think you're on the, I think you're on the right track.
And so basically what you're saying is, you don't really think that we need a process to be defined?
I think we need a process to be defined, I think it's a simplified process. I, I look at it, again, i- if you wanted to form a subcommittee, I guess that's okay, and they come back and make a recommendation to the, to the school committee, I guess that's okay. I'm more inclined to something of, again, the school committee making the decision after a public hearing. And a public hearing affording the opportunity for people to come in and be heard, you know, to a certain extent, similar to what we do with the Charlie Jones thing, of putting it on a more formal process, so that there's an announcement, people can come in and speak against or for, either way, and then the school committee takes a vote on it. You know, again, I, I wouldn't vote against a subcommittee, I just think it's, you know, it may be a, I suppose a subcommittee gives the community more, more input into what's going on, but...
I mean, I, you know, once you get...
I mean, I can live with it. My three things are, one, again, I just want a better definition of what we're talking about here as far as naming things. Two, I don't think it should be unanimous vote. Three, I'd like to see us have the authority, depending on the circumstances, to name any building. I mean, philosophically, I think every one of us is opposed to naming the high school or middle school after somebody, but I think it should be the option, it should be there, rather than saying in perpetuity, or until somebody changes the policy, we can't do it, you know, so. Other than that, I, I go along.
I mean, I, I can go either way on the subcommittee issue. I think once you get below number five, though, five all the way down, I think is 100% fine.
Yeah, I'm okay.
I mean, if you have the subcommittee, then one through four, five through, although one has to change, it should be if somebody proposes to the school committee or school administration the naming of a whatever field, park, building, et cetera, then the following process would be used. The question is, do we, do we have a subcommittee, or do we just have a public, is a public hearing required?
I mean, I, I think, I don't think they have to recommend three names, I think if this is a subcommittee, then you would review the petition that was made by whoever made it, and come to the school committee and say whether or not they satisfied all the criteria, whether or not they felt that it was worthy of, you know, approval.
That's a good idea, to have the subcommittee to do that, to review the candidate, to make sure that meet all the criteria.
And that doesn't preclude the school committee from voting on it, anyway, I mean, they approve it even without the recommendation of the subcommittee, so. So I think that, again, I think it's good, I think, you know, it needs to be addressed, but those are the three areas that I have, but...
So we really can't do the first reading tonight?
Well, you can, if you guys want to put your amendments in and go forward, or we could try to just work it a little bit more.
We might as well work it, yeah.
You know, if you... I, I think we're close.
If you modify, like you're saying, we're carrying it this up so much that might as well give you a clean draft.
Okay, all right. Is everyone okay with that?
I think five, from five on, is 100% okay. The, the big question is, on one through four, do we have a subcommittee? Probably yes, but we also should put in here, I don't know if it's in here a public, it's not a public hearing on it also.
I think there should be.
Yeah.
There's some, somewhere.
I think there should be a public hearing.
We'll announce if it's...
I don't think there's anything to say about a public hearing. This has been the longest...
Well, it's a...
Damnest policy.
I don't want to say it's controversial, but it's a major, it's a major...
It's really important.
And it's relevant. We've had it come up twice, you know, in the last six months. And, and with the new buildings, it's liable to come up again, so.
Again, I...
Because we're creating spaces that don't have names on them, we've got a lot of spaces that were previously named, that we've carried over.
Correct.
But we've got a lot of new spaces that we're sitting in one.
And the, the, when the Dell situation came up...
Yes.
That was presented to us, and within a moment or two, we had a motion, and we agreed that voted on that motion unanimously to...
Well, they gave us $650,000 of reasons to vote on that.
At $350 a square foot.
Yeah.
It's been...
Yeah. No, and you're right, Cliff, you know what, that's a good example of why we probably would have thought you went to the top, you know, even if it is a donation, it should still be, it should still be vetted.
Right, we should have probably said that night, well, you know, that's a great suggestion, we'll take into consideration, and we'll have a vote on it.
We should have said, leave the check alone.
Right.
But I mean, that was a combination of two things, it was a combination of a teacher that was just highly respected, very well loved, and made an unbelievable donation to, so. That was deceased.
Yes. John, I, I want to ask you a question, because I keep, even though I think we've said this about 50 times, I got the question again last week, what's going to happen, all those facilities at the old high school that were named, are those names moving over to the new high school, are the plaques moving over?
Yes. I've, I've been questioning too, over the last, probably two years, really, on occasion. I will tell you that a thought I had was, it was just a thought, I mean, because there's obviously a cost associated with it, but, for example, the Ralph Hudson Science Wing of the old high school, all the plaque reads is the Ralph Hudson Science Wing. And I think you could ask almost everyone that went to the high school, who's Ralph Hudson? You'd be hard pressed to find someone who's Ralph Hudson.
Who's been around the school committee for more years than they have.
And it just so happens his granddaughter is a teacher.
Yeah.
Sarah Butterworth is his granddaughter. So I had talked with Sarah that time about, I think the Barry Kipnis plaque is a very good plaque, because it tells a little bit of the story about Barry Kipnis. And I, I think it would be nice to think about the plaques, you know, still identifying the spaces that they did in the old school, have a little redesign that tells a story about who the person was or is.
And, and you get newer plaques that might better fit the space they're going into.
And consistency.
And maybe, and the old plaques, we could, I assume, give to families, or just give to families, or display them in a case study.
It's been talked about.
Oh, that's a good idea.
The attorney that represented Ellie Dell's estate is doing that with the family, the plaque, and it's going to tell a little story about Ellie's life and contributions, and I just, I think it might be a nice, rather than rush to, to put the plaque up, I think it, Sarah Butterworth's family took the time to, to write a little kind of a biography on the plaque, so. Something to think about, but I, to answer your question, you're right, yes.
I mean, I, I think the premise should be, everything moves over, and if it's not, we probably need to address that and take a vote on it, you know, because I would like to see, I know with the Barry Kipnis thing, it was very important to them, to the family that had...
Daniel Shay's granddaughter has spoken to me, you know, I think this...
He's writing the Kenny Field, I mean, those are things, they mean a lot to the people in the community.
I think John's right, because a lot of them, you know, preceded most of the people that are in town, now we should have something. I know when we went to the girls' and boys' soccer teams over at Manny Evol, they had a plaque on it, and you couldn't stop reading it, I mean, it was two broads plaques as big as those windows, about his life and about what his contributions were.
And so, and Barry Kipnis right now is the only one who has, whose name is officially moved over, because he's on the court.
Yeah, correct.
The plaque is still at the old school, right?
We're going to make arrangements to get that stuff moving.
And so we have, just, we have the gym.
Well, so you have the, the facilities to be named.
Right.
The West Levy Gymnasium, then you get Barry Kipnis Court.
Right.
The Howwise Music Center.
Yeah.
The Ralph Hudson Science Wing, the Frank Hudson Library, the Bill Butler Court.
Yeah.
Daniel Shay.
What's the court here we're going to use here, do we have a...
No, not, not, not as of yet.
But we are going to have a plaza up front here.
But there's a place, I think there is a place for that plaque.
And so there's, and then there's the, you said the Daniel Shay, we have the Ford Arts Center now.
Yeah, yeah.
But there, I mean, there are other things, as Jerry said, we now have this facility, we have this facility.
You'll have the Eleanor Dell, obviously.
We have the Fitness Center, which is something else that could be named, we have the gyms, which could be named. So we do have other, and we'll have things in the new school, in the middle school, we'll have that science kind of robotic standing.
Yeah. But I think if anybody asks you, and Jerry, the secondary school building committee has been very clear, you know, the idea was that anything that had been named in the old, that was, there was never any reason to not do it.
While we're on the same topic, the other question I keep getting is bricks from the old high school, when it gets torn down, former students say they'd love to get a brick or two.
$20 a brick, at least.
Well, what I've been telling him is, I think that might be possible, but, but the contractors have said that Manafort owns all that stuff, they tear it down.
Yeah, but I, I don't think we'd have much problem trying to get at least some of those bricks.
But I'm wondering if we should set, even though it's a year away, if, an SSBC meeting soon, that some kind of policy or something gets put in place where there will be bricks, and we decide, you know, is there a, you know, do we sell them? Do, you know, do we...
Well, I think the first thing is that we should probably have a discussion with our project manager, talk to Manafort to see how many we can, you know, pull out of there.
Yeah, because I think, you know, the school that's been around that long...
But if people are really interested in them, you know, that would be a good...
Almost 60 years, and I think...
60 years, and a lot of graduates, yeah.
And it was the first high school in the town, correct? Because before that, we went to Reading. So it has some historic, you know, historic significance, so. Anyway, I like it, something we can bring up with PMA and Manafort and SSBC.
Okay, so you guys are going to just do a little bit more work on that, then we'll get a vote, a vote, a call.
So we can be in the policy subcommittee one more time.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
No, it's, it's a tough policy, the policy topic, it is a type of, it is, it is.
When you, when you write company by committee, very, very difficult.
So you say that, Janine's right. All right. All right. Staff, we're going to ask the superintendent to make the announcement on the new assistant principal.
Yes, I'm very pleased to announce that Mr. Michael Downs, he and I have engaged in a successful contract negotiation. Mr. Downs is currently an associate principal of Methuen High School, and he will begin his, his duties here as the new assistant principal of North Reading High School on December 1st. He was one of 38 candidates that applied for the position. I want to commend Mr. McCratt and the search committee for the diligent work that they did, I think it was a very thorough process that they undertook, and I'm very excited about probably Mr. Downs coming on board. I have every confidence that he's going to do a very nice job for us. Interestingly enough, I had just somebody last night, a parent of one of our high school students who had a soccer banquet, works with Mr. Downs at Methuen High School, and she's the second of a parent that had very, very nice things to say, and since his appointment has been announced, they're, they're disappointed to be losing him in Methuen.
It starts Monday, right?
It starts Monday, December 1st, yes.
First name?
Michael, Michael Downs, D.O.W.N.S.
Any questions for the superintendent? Oh, okay, John, thank you. Bits and donations, we have several.
Bits and donations, yes, we do, we have, we have three. So the first is a donation from the Delaney family, it's a $500 donation to the athletic department.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the grant. Motion by Cliff, the second by Janine, to accept the donation, make a family $500 to the North Reading High School Athletic Department, golf, and specifically the golf team. Any further discussion here, and I'll also favorably say aye. Aye, aye, a motion, non-motion carries forward, and I'm going to thank you too, the Delaney family for that.
Yes. The second is, we received a very generous, again, another generous anonymous donation of $2,000 to the North Reading High School Masters Program.
Move to accept the $2,000 anonymous donation to the Masters Program with gratitude.
Hey, we have a motion by Mel, and the second by Janine, to accept the, again, the anonymous donation of $2,000, whoever it is, thank you, to the North Reading High School Masters Program. Any further discussion? Aye or not, also favorably say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carries, by a vote of four to none. And the last one, John?
Thank you. The third is an in-kind donation, and a very generous donation on behalf of Kristen Callahan, who was a graduate of North Reading High School and very suddenly and unfortunately passed away in her senior year. Her family, specifically her brother, Michael Callahan, had contacted me quite a few years ago when I was the principal of the high school about a foundation that he had established in his sister's memory, and their, their charge as a, as a fundraising and kind of a philanthropic organization was to make AEDs available to organizations that were in need of them. And he very generously donated two defibrillators at that time, one that had been installed in a cabinet in the gymnasium area, and another one that was a portable device to be taken out onto the athletic fields. So, when the new school opened, I contacted Michael in the hope of getting some assistance. It's a much bigger school, and I thought it might be nice for us to have an additional defibrillator or two. But in the end, quite honestly, he said to me, what do you think you need? And I told him I thought ideally four would be very much appreciated. And he contacted me a couple of days later and said that the foundation was willing to donate four, four additional defibrillators to be installed in the high school at a cost of $6,825.
Excellent. Kristen was a senior, as John said, she passed away in September of 1999. I know Kristen and her brother, Michael. She was a member of the class of 2000. She was a beautiful young lady. I have a recollection that she was jogging down the church road back, and she collapsed, and I don't think there was anybody there. So, but this is a very, very generous donation by the foundation. We really appreciate it. So, do we have a motion?
Motion from.
A motion from Janine, second from Cliff to approve again donation of the defibrillators, $6,825 from the Kristen Callahan Foundation. Any further discussion? Aye, not? Also favorably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries, supported, none. Subcommittees, does the policy subcommittee have anything further to the policy we already discussed? Okay, that's all we have. No, I can't board a directors. I think we have both Melon and Cliff that attended the meeting and have some other work.
Cliff was there in his new world that we basically appointed him to a month ago, and I think we're getting there. You know, there's still some frustration under NorCam's part, but I'd say that the majority of them are on board and willing to get this thing out. Cliff can give some more of the details. You know, I do want to point out that one thing that NorCam is concerned about is that, you know, they're saying that this, this delay is being blamed on them. It's not, it's not NorCam's fault that this has happened, that we don't have the cameras in yet. It's a process. And it's, so it's not NorCam screwing up the works here. And so, I just want to make that clear, that, you know, NorCam is working now with Cliff and with our contractors to get this done. Cliff, you may want to add some more details.
I believe it will come forward at the December 16th SSBC meeting, and I would be very surprised if we didn't get the work done over the Christmas holiday.
Right. I do want to add that NorCam is also going to make an effort at our next meeting to, through some patch cords, et cetera, to go live and try to do that until the new equipment is installed. I think Cliff is right. If that gets approved on the 16th by the SSBC, the hope is that they can do the work over the Christmas vacation.
Okay, thank you, John.
And the next meeting is on the 16th.
The financial planning team did meet last Friday, and the main topic, again, was a review of the current fiscal year budget and where we're at, but more importantly, looking forward to projected revenues for the next fiscal year. And based on the governor's recommendation to reduce state aid, there was a kind of a pessimistic outlook by the members of the financial planning team regarding the budget for next year. I would caution everybody that, first of all, I don't think the governor's has the final say on this yet. Obviously, we have a new administration coming in. We have the legislature who I think have expressed that they are going to not go along with this reduced funding for state aid. But I'd also say that this is early in the process, very early in the process, and that we go through this almost every year. So, I think, I don't think we should overreact right now in our budget presentations regarding the revenue projections that we have. Now, Michael and Cliff and John are all there, so if you guys want to add anything, that's.
I think that's a fair characterization of the.
Yeah. But again, we'll, these things do kind of fluctuate and move on a little bit, so. Okay, subcommittee schedule, the policy subcommittee, we don't have a date yet for the next meeting. NorCam, John Bell was again, December 16th.
December 16th.
Athletic Subcommittee's meeting tomorrow at 12:30 in the superintendent's office. The SSBC will be December 2nd, that's a Tuesday at 5:30 PM, and the finance planning team's next meeting is December 12th at 8:15 AM. We have a fairly lengthy list of correspondence that you want to go through that, John, or?
Sure, if you happen to. Just if I could, no, is that North Reading, is that seven?
Seven, yeah.
So, there are three pieces of correspondence in the packet. Mr. Vence, you had a question?
Oh, yeah, I'll talk about the first one.
John, talk about the description, okay.
Yeah, there was a letter in the paper, the transcript a week ago, Thursday, regarding the stipends that we awarded to some of our administrators. The letter had some questions about who, how much we gave, who gave it to them, what it was for, and that's a fair question. I don't think we discussed that in detail at the time. And so, I, this is something that the school committee has looked at on the recommendation of the superintendent over the last, I don't know how many years, at least.
It's in all of their contracts, I believe.
The first ones.
Right.
It goes back, it goes back a while, John.
I got it in 2003.
Yeah, so eleven years. So, anyway, on an annual basis, the superintendent will come to the school committee with recommendations for stipends. These stipends are for administrators, and therefore responsibilities, duties, and time spent above and beyond their normal working or their normal job description. Now, again, all of these administrators are salary people, so you could make the argument that everything they do falls within their job description, and that they should not receive the stipend. But in particular, with these building projects, going back to the Bouchelle project back in 2004, five, six, and then again, with this massive project that we're, we're working on right now with the middle school and the high school, people like, for instance, Kathy O'Connell, Wayne Hade, Patrick Daly, A.J. Lepret, John Bernard, you know, Kathy Willis have put in a tremendous amount of time way beyond, way beyond what would be expected of them in normally carrying out their duties. So, this particular year, the superintendent came to us, I think Superintendent Willis, and then Superintendent Bernard, and Glenn McKay, who was the principal of the hood school, was involved in a redistricting project, and he was given a $1,500 stipend. Christine Molly, the same thing. All the elementary schools, Sean Cooley, Christine Molly, Glenn McKay, all involved in this redistricting project, that they received a $1,500 stipend. Kathy O'Connell, for her work on the secondary school building committee, which I can attest to, was a lot of time and a lot of effort, both outside the normal hours and also within the normal workday. Same with Wayna Hadecker, they each received $3,000 stipends. Patrick Daly, the building project, a $1,500 stipend. A.J. Lepret for the building project, $2,125, which was prorated. Kathy Willis, again, received that under $11 based on her prorated time during the last fiscal year. Both Glenn McKay and Kathy O'Connell were mentors for new administrators, and they received each $1,500 stipend. And then the student activities account, which was managed by Mr. Lepret, who was vice principal, was also $1,500. That's one of the areas where that may be built in and probably will be built in to the new vice principals.
That's correct.
Duties and responsibilities. But let me say this, that again, these were stipends that totaled about $19,000 that were for time spent way above and beyond what was requested or required of them. But in addition to that, I came to realize a while ago while sitting on this committee that we have a very, very good team of administrators, starting from the superintendent on down, going back to David Trug, going back to Kathy Willis and John Bernard, you know, Patrick Daly and all the administrators that worked so closely with us, that it's been my desire to work with them, to keep them here. And I think these stipends help, help give them some incentive, you know, to continue to do the fine work that they do. So, we're very, very, very fortunate to have the people we have.
And I want to point out, Jerry, that one of the things the letter was wanting is, where's the money coming from? This money, we budget, we budget these funds, correct, Michael?
That's correct.
Because they're in all the administrators' contracts. Now, we don't have to.
We don't have to do it.
We could go through and give all administrators zero. But as Jerry said, you know, some of the, the elementary school redistricting project is, is a big project. It's a very important project because we have decreasing enrollment right now, and we need to better balance, we may need to better balance our elementary school populations. Jerry said about the building projects, and mentoring new administrators is not something that's part of the.
Takes time, takes extra time.
Right, so.
And in the building project, there were days, we were working seven days.
Right.
A week. I mean, we were literally meeting on Saturdays and Sundays, so that we had our principal, our superintendent, our vice principal, Wayne Hadecker, on Saturday and Sunday mornings. This was for.
Long time.
Several months at a time, they were trying to do this. Janine?
It might not be the right time to ask, but why is Mr. Bernard's name?
These are making too much. Mr. Bernard will come to us later.
Contract age.
His contract is a different.
Bad one.
But it's, it's going to be in that same, that same framework. I mean, you know, generally it does not exceed $3,000. But I, I, again, I can't stress enough, and this isn't business, it's not big business, but it's, it's, you know, I've come to realize that we want to keep these people here, we want to keep them in North Reading, that we have to compensate them fairly. And I think this is a small way of trying to, trying to do that, so.
Well, the one other thing I can add, Jerry, is, you know, when, when Dr. Trug was superintendent, we didn't keep these, we didn't keep them hidden, but we weren't as public about discussing them at meetings. And when Kathy came in, she, every year, we discuss them at public meetings, and now John is continuing that. And I think it's important for the public to know. And I'm glad you brought the list tonight, and again, it's.
It's a fair question. I mean, I, I wasn't crazy about the comment of the question, but the question's a fair question, as to what they're buying, who's getting it, where's the money coming from, so.
Mr. Vence, if you don't mind, if I could just, on the, on the elementary school redistricting, I just, I don't want to unnecessarily alarm anyone. That's really, that's an exploratory committee right now. It's just, we're, we don't know what direction we may be going in, but I think it's, it's being done in a proven way to just think about.
Needs to be looked at.
Right, we have something to prepare for.
Right, right. So, is a lot of items on that class list, John?
So, next, in your packet, you should have a copy of the letters that our new high school principal, Mr. Lepret, received, which was dated November 17th, he received it on November 18th. And it's a letter from the Women's Association of Schools and Colleges, and it's regarding the, the status of the accreditation of North Reading High School. And I'm hoping you had an opportunity to read the letter. It's, in my opinion, it's an outstandingly glowing letter of the, of the high school and its programs and its staff, the commitment this, this community makes to its education of students. As someone who was intimately involved in the process when I was principal, I take a great deal of pride in, in the work that a lot of people did to bring about a very, very highly successful accreditation site visit last March. And, and with that, I want to be very specific, for those of you that attended the opening day welcome reception on March 2nd last year, I tried very hard to acknowledge the, the work that gets done across the district, that the accreditation process is not solely a high school process. It's, it's a reflection of the work that gets done from when a child enters school in kindergarten all the way up to, up to grade 12. And I, I think it's important for me now, as the superintendent, to, to acknowledge that again, and to pay thanks to, to everyone in this district, the community as a whole, that is strongly supportive of, of the educational program kindergarten through grade 12. And this, this letter is extremely complimentary. We do have a requirement of a two-year progress report to submit October 1st of 2016. That's very standard. When I came here as principal in 2003, the situation was different. There was a six-month report requirement to address some immediate concerns. We do not have that requirement under this, under this visit. But I commend particularly Mr. Lepret and Mike Rosa, the director of guidance, that led the, led the effort to form this year and committee and shepherd our accreditation process through. And this letter is, is, I think, a wonderful testimony to the hard work that goes on across the district, so I'm very thankful.
And if you're involved in it, I mean, this is another example of our administrators, faculty, and staff having to do a lot of work above and beyond and outside the normal responsibilities that they have. We do this once every 10 years, John, right?
Once every 10 years, correct.
And it's a, it's a big, big job when that time comes around, so.
So, thank you for allowing me an opportunity to, to talk about that.
John, I'm wondering, is it, is this something, the letter might be too long, but maybe we can submit it to the transcript to see if, you know, or excerpts?
So, Mr. Lepret has already done that. He's, he's already spoken to the block tours about the report itself, which was received just, just before the letter came. And so, I'm expecting that, that there'll be a story in the paper soon.
I was going to ask that maybe Dan be able to break this down and highlight the.
The whole report, though. You can read the report. That's just to lay in. I'll get to it.
It's posted on the website here. It is on the website for the district, Dan, of High School.
Okay.
What I don't think Bob knows yet, Dan, though, is the next piece of correspondence. You can have this one on your own. I'm sure she had the. So, also in your packet is a letter from the college board, and I think this is also just a very nice acknowledgement of the work of our students and our advanced placement teachers, all of our teachers. It's a recognition of our placement on the fifth annual AP District Honor Roll. This is quite an honor. North Reading High School has not been placed on the Honor Roll in the past. So, this year, as a result of the AP scores from the 2013, 14 school years, one of 547 schools in the United States and Canada that has been placed on the AP Honor Roll for, for two reasons. One is the increase in access to advanced placement courses. This year, I know we have over 400 students taking, 400 enrollments in the AP course. And it's also for an increase in our rate of scores of a three, four, or five on advanced placement exams. So, again, this is a very nice, very nice acknowledgement for the hard work that goes on at the high school among our students and teachers.
Congratulations, A.J. He's only been principal for a month, and he's got us on him.
For the first time, Kelly.
John's got a gist.
I know, exactly.
John, I'm going to ask you then now to give your administrator a quote.
Oh, before that, I, I want to commend Cliff and Janine, and I think Michael attended a recent hearing on, on Chapter 70 formula.
Town administrator.
Town administrator. And I think Cliff's, Cliff actually submitted some written comments, and they're excellent.
They are excellent. Unfortunately, we're on a government watch list now as a result of.
I think I was in every year the last 30 years, so.
But they, I mean, he, Cliff addressed not only, you know, statewide issues, but also issues specific to North Reading, specifically the issue of having more children per household in schools than a lot of other cities and towns. And that hurts us in the Chapter 70 formula.
Which is something Cliff raised when he first came on the committee, which wasn't that readily apparent to some of us.
Exactly.
But became a real, a real issue.
Right.
What was interesting, and I'm not sure how many people noticed it, perhaps they, perhaps the people on this commission noticed it, but of all of the testimony given, I was the only one who gave structural, specific structural comments to be, to change.
Well, you hit on the hot topic, to be honest with you. The ones in the package affect us a lot, so. Everything from the special ed to the.
I appreciate, I appreciate Cliff and Janine going, and also having four representatives from North Reading. I think it's excellent. So, thank you.
Okay. Minister of Education?
Yes, sir, thank you. So, as I had told you at our last school committee meeting on November 10th, we had a scheduled visit for, from the Secretary of Education, Dr. Matthew Malone. And so, I just wanted to follow up with you to say that Dr. Malone did come. Mr. Webster attended as well. He was, he was very entertaining.
It was a blast.
It really was. And we had a fun, I don't know, maybe 90 minutes or so. And he toured, he was able to tour the high school. He was very engaged. He was very engaging. And we brought him to a couple of classes, and asked the teacher for an opportunity to speak to the class. And really, he was a great cheerleader for public education, encouraging them to look at the public university system at the high school. And, you know, he was very quick to, to follow us on Twitter, and he tweeted out some comments about his, his observations when he was here. And it was, it was a really nice, it was a really nice opportunity to, to bring him around the school. And I think he had a very nice time in the middle, do you think? I think he really enjoyed himself.
When he went into the science class, he basically dressed the kids, and then he'd had them all there, taking pictures with him. And then when we went, when we went to the gym, we got into the fitness room.
Fitness room, yeah.
He was like, oh, this is, he was, this is unbelievable. You know, he thought the fitness room was great. But then he was asking us, where are tires? Remembering where, he goes, where are your big tires and things so that kids can pick up? I said, we can go somewhere.
Sounds like my kind of secretary of education.
He was, he was in character. He was good. He was. It was a very nice, and a very nice visit, so.
And he took in everything.
He did.
He really did.
And he liked the, he liked the facility.
Oh, he loved the school.
So impressed. And he went into a couple of classes, science classes, he saw the lab facilities, and he, again, he asked the teacher if he could just speak briefly to the students. And yeah, he was, he was very good. It was, it was a really nice opportunity. And just, I'd like to just reminder, and thank you to Mr. Simons, who's here tonight, for putting out the word, too. We are going to have some tours of the new school on Thursday morning, Thanksgiving morning, from 8:00 to 9:30 for any, for anybody in the community that wants to come. But particularly, the invitation is extended to any alumni who may have left for college or did not get an opportunity to see the school at the open house in September. So, those, again, will be from 8:00 to 9:30 this coming Thursday. I just wanted to follow up with you also that Michael, Michael Connolly and I hosted a meeting with, for the community on November 12th regarding the, the school committee's new policy on relations with booster and other organizations. And certainly, Michael can, can add his, his contribution here. But I would characterize that the meeting is very positive. It was well-attended. There were 42 people that's who came, who were very interested. Michael did a very nice job of presenting the PowerPoint presentation you all had seen. And really, I think, we, I think, we handled some questions and we informed the people in attendance, all of whom were very interested in wanting to do the right thing to form their booster or support group legitimately and to the benefit of our students, and we announced to them, and I want to thank Rena Mullin and Sheila, Sheila Sturdivant, who's working with you, Michael, to get the representative from the attorney general's office out to, to the district, because there's some interest among parks and recreation groups that support those organizations.
Well, the select want to follow, that was, that came out also with the financial planning team.
Yeah, Michael Galvero asked for a copy of our, our policy, the policy...
Because they have a number of groups there.
So it was a very positive tone, and, and Michael and I spoke a few days later, we decided that we would reach out to people again to just offer ourselves, you know, to have, I think there was a lot of just kind of digesting the information, and so we're, we're gonna offer ourselves available to them on December ninth, for anybody that comes back, now that they've had time to read the policy, look at some of the information on the websites that Michael pointed them to, and if they have questions for us, we'll be available. So I'm very optimistic that people are, people in the community are seeking to become involved to try to, to help bring good programs to the students that we might not have the likelihood to bring to them because of the financial restrictions.
Right.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's all I have, thank you for that. Anything further before we do a meeting?
I just wanted to mention, there was a nice little article in the, on the patch on Sunday, talked about a, the North Reading High School World of Science Club, which hosted a lunch with a scientist here, and it's, it's great to see this room getting used, and they had three, I think, engineers from Morpho Detection, which is a subsidiary of Safran, which is located in Wilmington, and what they do is they, they design and build field-proofing explosives, narcotics and chemical detection systems, and they had that in here, and that's part of the purpose of this room. And in the past, we could have these things, but we couldn't have as many people involved, and, you know, we could have them in a classroom or, you know, go off to a corner of the auditorium, and now we have a room that's perfectly sized for these kinds of opportunities. And I think there was another, there was another thing in there, I think the day that Matt Malone was here, there was something...
There was, there was an English and social studies class, they had come together for, and they did discipline.
Right, there was some kind of...
And it's good to see the spaces kind of evolving, I mean, the space, the, obviously the gym, the, the workout, the fitness centers seems to be used every day at school. The auxiliary gym is full, it's every day, and God bless the dancing, they came, it was brand new this year, they said they were gonna do this, they got the participation, they're over there, in there every day, they roll up the mats, they roll it back up again, they use the facility, and that, that's great, so, I mean, that's really what we're looking for.
I'll have some two jurors photographing, and we're just beginning the rehearsals for Peter Pan.
Oh, right, the middle school.
Every space down there used, they have about five different spaces, including the stage, which is working perfectly fine, and the shop, I was so excited to see that, in full board, they have lumber, you know, they're getting ready to use the power tools, all the tools they have down there, build the sets, they have their...
Kids are doing it themselves.
Mock-ups of the design, what they're gonna build for Peter Pan, that they weren't running the tools yet, but that's, should be any time. Fantastic, I mean, just be able to do all that.
It's, it's just, it really is, it's satisfying to see people in the spaces using the sets.
You know, Allison used to say, you have to schedule her rehearsals because it needs some time to build the stage, and then the kids have to go, all these things are going on simultaneously.
And what's that, the middle school place gonna be the Wizard of Oz?
Yes, and I'll be here too.
I watched it on TV last night, it was on, it's a repeat.
Really? Was nothing changed?
No, it was on last night.
It really was. And that gets to, we talked about the punch list, you know, there are a lot of items on the punch list, and a lot of things that need to be fixed, but none of those items are impeding education and use of the building, and I think that's important, you know, there's a lot of, there's painting, there's this, there's that, but there's no, there's nothing major that's stopping us from using the building, and that's the most important.
Oh, building's ready to go, we're ready to go in September.
Correct, so, we'll keep on talking to get those things done, but it's, it's nothing that's stopping us from doing what we need to do in school.
Okay, our future schedule, December eighth, two thousand and fourteen, we'll be meeting here, and that will be the annual high school presentation meeting. December twenty-second, again, seven PM here, and same for January twelfth at seven o'clock, again, on the December eighth meeting, we're gonna have a six-thirty executive session.
Now, December twenty-second, we have this tentative, right, so, we're gonna take a look at business and see whether we need to have that meeting or not, correct?
Do you want to make that decision on December eighth?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't want to go too long, though.
I'm saying, December eighth, then we'll have to, if we don't have the twenty-second, we'll have to make sure we go for our pre-Christmas celebration on the eighth if we don't meet on the twenty-second.
Which we use pretty much to talk about school business.
Right, and we'll have to call, we'll have to call Mr. Nelson and Mrs. Willis and other past, and see if they want to participate.
Okay, if there's nothing further, take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Cliff, second by Janine, also favorably say aye. Aye, opposed, none. What do you think?
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.